And I will go live on Facebook. And we are almost live. All right, I think we are ready to go.
Sounds good. All right, so if we're ready to go, let's, we'll call it a meeting order here at six o'clock tonight. We're gonna forego the pledge and we do have a quorum this evening. I believe John is not with us this evening, so. I have in addition to the regular agenda, add on to the end there right before portfolio reports. Add in letter from councilman Corstelman. And we'll put that down as fifteen and we'll move the other two fifteen sixteen down one. And I think Brenton's good. I don't know if anybody else got any additions or changes they want to the agenda. Otherwise, I'll accept the motion with that one addition.
Motion approved with addition.
Okay, Brian makes a motion.
Second.
Chelsea does a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, motion carries. And we'll go approving the consent agenda. Don't think there was anything on there. It looked like it was pretty much standard stuff unless you guys got some questions. Or Jim, was there anything on there that we needed to know about that? There's not aware of at this point.
Uh, nothing, nothing out of the ordinary, just uh, some progressive estimates on a final for the County Road Seventeen thirty's path, so. Nothing out of the ordinary.
Yeah, didn't look like. I just thought there were some updates here for the last.
Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Okay, Dave makes a move. Brian does a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Uh, council minute meetings from last time around. So I didn't see anything on there that was off unless you guys caught something that I missed.
I didn't see anything, so I'll make a motion to accept the council minutes from December seventh meeting.
Okay, Dave makes a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Brian got you there, Chelsea. Go put them down.
All right. Okay.
They made a motion, Brian does a second, so all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, motion carries. Hey, Brenton, were you gonna do the sheriff's update for us tonight?
Yeah, the only thing I have for sheriff's update is that Deputy Thomas Beam, one of our deputies will be dropping off rotation with City of Horace. Going, my understanding, going to patrol and then our new deputy will be, his name is Craig Keller. Uh, as you know, our deputies rotate, they'll come in, have two years on and we rotate new deputy every year. Deputy Carlezy was supposed to be up for rotation, but he requested to stay on another year and then so Beam said okay and Carlezy is staying on for another year and Craig Keller is coming on for two years.
Yeah. Well, we sure appreciate Thomas's help down here for his year and wish him well in his future endeavors for sure.
Agreed.
So, okay, all right, and we'll move on to number seven then. Lucas, you've got this one.
Yeah, so Brett, do you wanna start on this or should I just give an update based on, I mean, at your meeting last month, Brent kinda discussed this. That this ordinance would be on the agenda this week. All it is is an ordinance allowing Dicky Rural Service to basically have a franchise with the city to install their infrastructure in the city's right of way. The only difference with this one and other franchises that the city has done for like gas and electric is that the city won't receive a fee for this. It's not allowed under, under law. Instead, the city will collect permit fees every, anytime that there's installation of, of any of these services by Dicky Rural in the City of Horace. So the city will still collect funds whenever they're installing other infrastructure. It just won't have it via a fee arrangement. So that's, again, it's based off of the other franchises that the city has in place. It's just, like I said, the only change is the fee structure.
Why would they not use the franchise fees instead of the, and, and why would use the permit fees instead of the franchise?
The city's not allowed to have a fee for fiber optic for, for internet like this and so the, the fee structure is actually permitting rather than just a flat percentage.
Well, but it's a, it's a service no different than midco provides. It's
Midco's cable.
Yeah. The franchise we collect for
This is internet.
Yeah, what we collect is for cable subscription or service from a co, it's sparklight. Uh, this is fiber, fiber and phone are exempt from franchise fee. That's more of a federal regulation is my understanding. Because they're regulated by the FCC. At least that's what has been explained to me before and the others are not, so they, they don't have the same protection for a franchise fee per se. But they will have to pay like Lucas mentioned. A right, right away permit fee every time they go into a right of way.
In essence, it's gonna put more work on our team to the city staff to be able to manage this because especially next summer, right?
Technically, all the utilities are supposed to fill out right away permits whenever they are to do work. We've been trying to stress that with those utilities and as part of with revising all the franchise agreements with each of the utilities is the stress that they need to be communicating with us when they are in the right of way. Those other agreements, I believe they do state that they are supposed to fill out a right away form or apply for a permit. They just don't have to pay that right away fee. And because, because they have the franchise fee, so.
That, that's correct. And Councilman Schmidt, this Dicky Rural Services, as they explained last month, they provide service in Castleton and Mapleton and the franchise ordinance that they have is, is different than what the City of Horace ended up using. And that's because we modeled it after the franchises that the city has just put in place or recently modified with like Cass County Electric and then Northern State Power for gas. And so right now the city has with those three franchises, they're all, they're all very similar, the same structure. They have the same provisions in them. The only difference right now is just that, that fee structure and that's because of what's mandated by law.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions, anybody? Okay.
So does that mean that, well, one more, one follow up question then. So because this agreement is in effect for essentially twenty years, if the FAA changes or IFA FCC changes the rules for that, do we need, would we then subsequently change this ordinance if that, if that rule changes at the federal level?
Yeah, we can, we can change this ordinance at any time. It's just the two parties love to come together to have an agreement on it and that would just be worked out at a later date if that does in fact change.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions, anybody? Okay, so if not, I'm gonna entertain a motion to accept the first reading of the fiber optic agreement.
So moved.
Moved.
Brian got you. If Brian makes a motion, can I get a second?
I'm just getting second.
Well, she was technically second, so.
Just playing screen here. Okay, so got, got a motion and a second, so all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, so yep, got the first reading done. All right, Barrett, you got number eight? Or Lucas, everyone pick it up?
Oh, I could do it. What you have before you is a second reading on a rezone application or zone change. As you recall, this is for Horace Elementary First Edition. This would just resound the property from RE Residential Estate to PF Public Facilities. Staff didn't receive any comments, so no changes are proposed and staff recommends approval as stated in the staff report.
Yeah, okay, like you said, there was no, there's been no changes and been no further comment on it, right?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, anybody got any questions on this one or? Think we pretty much.
I'll make a motion to approve the rezone.
Okay, Chelsea makes a motion. Get a second. Brian got a second. Okay, Chelsea made a motion, Brian did a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, motion carries. Move on to number nine. Variance. Who's got this one to start?
I can present if you'd like. I also have a PowerPoint. If Councilmember Schmidt, if you don't mind pulling that up.
Is it out on SharePoint or where's it at?
It's on SharePoint. It's labeled item number nine, variance PowerPoint.
Okay, I did not pull it down. It must have just been posted.
Yeah, well, if not, we can use the maps in the middle of the staff report if that'll work for you too. I, I just wanted to provide you with the visual so you're able to see. If I can get it, go down to the next slide. We'll, we'll go down to the location map to start with. Or that'll work too. So what you have before you is an application for variance at eighty-eight oh four Lost River Road or lot two, block one, Lost River Edition. This application for variances for the front yard, front setback, this property is owned or two, single family residential. This application was submitted by Winnie Development to Incorporated. And we do have Dwyer Law Office as a participant on the meeting tonight. If you have any further questions for them. What came about is we received a building permit application to put it attached, single family structure on the slot. When staff reviewed the zoning ordinance, we virtually found, or we found that the front yard setback is measured between the property line and the building line. So what's kind of odd with flag lots, you're looking at a flag lot here and I can provide a brief description of a flag lot. A flag lot configuration is any lot that looks like what, how you envision a flag on a flag pole. So as you can see in the slot in the picture, it's a rectangle with a smaller piece coming off and touching the right of way. Staff found that we don't have anything in our ordinance that regulates flag lots. And when you measure a setback, you actually have to follow that jagged line on the front of the property off of Lost River Road there, correct? So if you go up in the staff report, this is just kind of a schematic to show the proposed placement of the single family detached structure. The applicant stated that they wanted to put it eight feet away rather than thirty feet from the property line because they wanted the front facade to match all of the other existing housing facades on that street. So you kinda have this a line, a row of houses down the street. They said that if they were to set it back and meet our setbacks, that it would create a really bad aesthetic quality and the house would seem really out of place. So the applicant also stated, in addition, the staff kinda had concerns with it being eight feet away from the property line. But the applicant ensured that no basement would be built, it'd be slab ungrade and that no windows would be in that area or on that site, in that area of the property in that corner. So they thought that without a basement, without a window wells, they're not really compromising on any safety issues and they could bring it and hug it closer to the property line. And I don't know if you want me to go through all the conditions, but the zoning ordinance states that there are variance conditions that have to be met. There's eight of them. I believe I put nine in the staff report. I apologize. So they're, they're asking for a twenty-two foot encroachment to set the property back eight feet instead of thirty. The hardship that was identified is that the applicant unknowingly did not realize the interpretation of a setback and how that would result and affect a development proposal to build a single family residence. And that the property would be deprived of having the same setback as the other properties along Lost River Road. So staff has identified a hardship and believe a hardship does exist. And we recommend approval of the variance as stated in the staff report. One thing I would like to note, if the city council agrees with the staff and planning commission to provide an eight foot setback, I would also recommend conditions of approval that with this variance that a basement is not allowed to be constructed and no window wells are to be installed. If we were not to add on those conditions, you would essentially be granting a variance and there would be nothing that would prevent maybe a successive property owner from installing a basement or those window wells. So ju- just something to keep in mind. And if the council has any questions, please let me know.
Okay. Uh, Lucas, is anything you wanna add on to that or pretty much covered it, I think, but unless you got something you wanna add?
That, that covers, covers it. The only thing I would add is that it is a public hearing.
Yep, let's just say we'll open it up for a public hearing now then and
And that's about all I have on this. It was discussed at the planning commission level. The planning commission recommended approval of the variance and so that's before the council tonight.
Yep. So I don't know, does, Brian, can we bring Russ in?
Oh, sure. Uh, I don't know if he needs to present. I just, Russ, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Yeah.
There you go.
Okay, Russ, I just gotta see if you got anything you wanna add on to this or just, or you know?
No, the only thing is on the staff report, you'll see fifteen feet, but the planning commission passed it at eight feet.
Okay.
So is that just because of the flag or the, the configuration of where it is in the lot, Russ?
Yes, yes, and the, the eight feet is just that portion that's so they're gonna be eight feet back from the fence on the west side, their front yard. And the way we looked at it in an R two, your side lot, your side lot setback can be eight feet on one side. So this is no different than a side lot at this point as far as we were concerned.
So Barrett, the, the thirty foot setback would have been, they would have potentially needed to sit thirty feet back from that fence area kinda is what you're stating, right? So then that would have sent the house way back and set further back than most of the other houses on the road, correct?
Correct, yep.
Okay, okay.
Okay, anybody else have any?
Comments? And, and there is a fence there, right? You said, Russ, or Russ said that there's a fence, right?
Yeah. Right, there's a fence that runs along the north, runs along the north side of the property and then that west side where it drops down.
Right here?
Correct, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Dave, anybody from the public having any questions or comments?
No, I do not see any questions on either chat or our question and answer area.
All right, anybody else have any questions, comments on this at all?
Well, I think it's, I think it's good. I think, I agree with you, Russ, that we're gonna have to put these conditions on the, the variance to make sure that there are some, you know, it's, it's a, there's a condition to the variance that they can't that the wheel or the window wells and so forth will pose an issue and violate the, the variance, right?
Right, I'd say, yes, that's what I think, guys. If we do this, that the, the two conditions would be that there are no window wells and no basement. Obviously, they go together, but we should make sure that that's stated in the conditions if we approve this.
And, and the applicant, Russ, approved that with those, if those conditions were placed on them? Or Barrett, either one of you guys can answer that?
These conditions were brought up at the meeting. It's kind of an afterthought, but we do have Dwyer Law Office here on as a participant. If you wanted to inquire whether they would agree to those terms or not.
Dwyer Law Office has commented, we are fine with the condition that a basement is not allowed in the chat window, so.
Sure. Okay, so like I said, I think if we wanted to make a motion on this, folks, we can probably do it, you know, again, no basement, no window.
Yes, yep. You'll have to close the public meeting, I guess, right first.
Yeah, I just, that's, I just say if we're gonna do a motion here, so um, with that then, okay, I'll go once again. Anybody else got any comments, public or council? Otherwise, I will close the public hearing on this and I'll look for a motion.
I'll move that we accept the variance with the requested criteria of no basements or window wells allowed. I guess, would you wanna state it slab ungrade or something? What would you suggest, Barrett, I guess?
Yeah, I would just leave it at those two criteria. Obviously, we don't wanna violate international building code, so I would assume with the basement, you'd have to have window wells by excluding both. But I, I think we would accomplish the task of eliminating window wells from that eight foot setback area.
Okay.
All right, so Dave makes the motion. Did I get a second?
Second.
Okay, Chelsea does a second. Okay, so all in favor, say aye.
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 All right.
So can I, can I add one thing, Barrett? Is this, is this an opportunity for us to adjust the planning and zoning ordinances so that we can handle this kinda situation in the future?
Yeah, it's kind of interesting. We brought forward flag lots at the last planning commission meeting. Unfortunately, there wasn't a consensus on how to regulate them. What this, what staff is gonna bring forward at the next planning commission meeting when we have ordinance amendment document available and ready for public hearing. We're going to recommend that we not allow for flag lots in our community and continue to look at flag lots on an individual basis until consensus can be found on how to regulate flag lots.
I mean, this is, this is one thing that I don't want the council to be getting into the business of granting variances for these kinds of situations and therefore, I mean, this situation, I'm, I'm okay with it, but we, we don't, we wanna set up our ordinance in such a way where we don't have to grant these kind of variances in the future.
Right, we don't want any frequency with this.
I mean, this is such a situation that our ordinance don't cover. I get it, you know, then, then, but this is an opportunity for us to go fix our ordinances so that
Isn't, isn't this something? Isn't this something, Barrett, you would bring up in this, in this ordinance redo or rework that we're starting our process on?
Absolutely. So my, my suggestion to not allow further flag lots would be for that purpose, just kind of as a stopgap measure until we can get a consultant to give us different perspective or recommendations on how to proceed forward on that.
Cause I agree with you, every one of these situations gonna be a little bit of a case by case basis, but overall, there should be general guidance for these developers so that we don't run into these kind of variant situations.
Yeah. Okay, anybody else got anything else on this one? Otherwise, we'll move along. Okay, move on to number ten then. Barrett, you got this one?
Yep. Number ten, once again, just another second reading on a zone change application. As you recall, this is for Southdale Farms Third Edition. It's for subdivision, you'd be rezoning it from A agricultural to PF Public Facilities, R six, high density residential, C two commercial and ME Max Deus. Staff hasn't received any comments and staff recommends to approve of the application as stated in the staff report.
Yeah, and again, nothing's changed since the first reading. That's kinda what we're, you know, any no comments, so, yeah. Okay, anybody got any questions on this one? I think we kinda hashed this one off the last score, for, on the first reading, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the rezone.
Okay.
A second.
Chelsea made a motion, Brandon did a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Move on to the next one. Brenton, you've got that one?
Yeah, I'm gonna have Becky touch base on this one since she's been working directly with this. But just, if you have, if you have other questions, big picture, I could say I'm the answer, so.
Yeah.
Good evening. We were contacted by the landowners, Francis in Florence Scott, and they were saying that they received special assessment for the roundabout on their main property as well as a ten foot sliver that runs along their property. So when I went and looked at our special assessment listing for the roundabout, I found that any lot less than point one acre should not have been assessed. And for some reason, they, that little sliver was the only lot that was under that requirement that got assessed. And if you were to put their two lots together, they would still be in the amount of a special assessment of four hundred sixty-two dollars and twenty-eight cents. So I'm recommending that we have approval to remove the assessment on that small parcel.
So in essence, in essence, the special assessment will be covered by the, the combination of A and B lots. And it's just eliminating this notion of having this, this parcel being, you know, special set on its own.
Correct.
Correct, yeah, that makes sense. So it isn't like we have to change the special assessment amount or anything. It's just the combination or I don't know what it takes to remove that, but that's a different topic.
I, they did inquire about what they need to do to bring, put those two lots together. So I got them the form from Cass County requesting that and so it's up to them now to request that so that going forward, we wouldn't have that issue. So.
Yeah. All right, so something that got they got missed there. Okay, so Brenton, what we, what is it? Do you want us to make a motion on here just to basically remove that from the special?
Basically, what you would be doing is the cost of that special assessment would be covered within we have like a contingency fund within the special assessment district. So that four hundred sixty some dollars would be covered within that. So that, that would be what your motion would be is to address the special assessments for that lot identified with it and to cover them within that fund. Is my understanding correct, Becky?
Yes.
Yeah, cause you could not waive the specials, like you couldn't just say, nope, they're no longer there. Right, that would be a reassessment or re-breakout of all the specials. It would be the, that fund that would cover it. So what we have left in the fund would be the, what, what covers that special assessment.
Okay. All right, somebody wanna make a motion then to do that? I believe that's what we're
I'll make a motion then that we utilize the contingency fund to cover the specials for this point zero seven acre lot for four hundred and sixty-two dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Second.
Anything? Somebody else was chiming in there? Brenton, you, something else? Oh, okay.
No.
Okay, so with that then, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. If the animals pass, all right, move on to the next one. Jim, you got this one. Snow removal emergency routes, so we hope we don't have to use this year.
Yes, that is the truth. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Public Works approached me about updating the snow removal emergency route map. Original snow and ice removal policy was adopted on December third of two thousand eighteen. Part of that policy was implementation of a snow emergency route. Since two thousand eighteen, the City of Horace has added approximately sixteen point seven lane miles in five new residential subdivisions and quite a few streets is similar to Lakeview Drive, Seventy-Ninth Avenue, Sixty, Sixty-third Street and urbanized and widened Seventy-sixth Avenue. So with the addition of those lane miles, there has been a priority, a change in the way that the public works would like to do the emergency snow routes. Adding some, I don't think there's any, there was a deletion of one on sixty, Sixty-third was gravel that was originally on the, on the snow burn here, but no, it's up, it's sixty-fourth avenue. I'm sorry, I was looking at the wrong thing, so.
Oh, up here, you mean? Or sixty-fourth avenue?
Sixty-fourth Avenue.
Yeah, the sixty-fourth avenue is covered by the county, right?
No, it's a gravel road right now and it's not a emergency route. It's just a, a standard, standard route. So, so that was removed from it. Seventy-sixth Avenue was added as long, and so was Sixty-third Street along the school. Seventy-ninth Avenue, Lakeview Drive out to the, out to County Road Seventeen. Lost River Road was modified due to the addition of the fifth, or the construction of the fifth edition. And the eastern boundary was modified from Prairie View to Terror Gardens due to the construction of, of Terror Gardens. So your policy is in place. It's just updating your, the map that goes along with the policy to, to include the new streets.
So, so this was the change right over here, Jimmy, you said?
Yeah, it used to go up five and a half over to fifth and then up.
Okay.
Now it'll be going Now it'll be going over, getting the rest of Park and getting the rest of, of Wall Avenue there.
So this was all the same. It's just moving it from here to here. This was all the same.
Yep, and then over there, it came up Wild Rose Way. It used to come up Wild Rose Way and now it continues through to Meadow, through along that Meadow Lark.
Oh, so now it's coming down and up to here. Okay.
Yeah.
And this was here before.
That was there before.
And this is new.
That is new around the school, yeah.
And, and this, this portion is covered by Cass County.
Correct.
All of County seventeen is, of course, covered by Cass County.
Correct.
And this was, this hasn't changed.
That has not changed.
Okay. Any other questions on that, guys?
Motion to approve the snow removal route as proposed by city staff and, and public and engineering.
Okay, Brian makes a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Chelsea does a second. Okay, so all in favor, say aye.
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 That is, that is incredible. That is incredible that we've added sixteen miles of new road service that we have to move snow on.
Yep.
If that's in one, one year or since?
Since, since, since the map was produced originally.
Okay, all right.
Right.
That's incredible.
Well, that's why we got the new truck last year too, to be able to handle this. We knew it was coming.
We have another truck coming as well, correct, to replace one?
Yep, we have to for this kind of work.
Yes.
All right, so let's move on to thirteen. Jim, you may as well pick it up again there.
Yes, we will continue on. So the first thing I have is Seventy-Sixth Avenue from sixty-third Street East to the city limits. Brian, you have this email, or you should have it from, from last week.
Oh, okay.
So Cass County is planning a two-year project to widen, raid, and pave Seventy-sixth Avenue from where we left off on sixty-third Street to Forty-Fifth Street, and then they'll continue north of Forty-Fifth Street. As part of this project, the county highway department reached out. It should be an attachment to that, or it's, it's in an email, Brian.
So the plan sheets?
Yes. So the Cass County Highway Department reached out to, to us and asked if the city would be interested in installing storm sewer along the south side of Seventy-sixth Avenue, filling in the large ditch that was constructed as part of the Seventy-sixth Avenue project and installing a shared use path from where the current path leaves off at sixty-third out to the entrance to Cub Creek at Cub Creek Way. This would be part of their two-year project. It's probably install the storm sewer this next coming year, twenty-twenty-one, and then it's scheduled to be paved in twenty-twenty-two. This will be a rural section. This won't be a urban gutter, urban section. It'll be similar to County Road six to the west of County Road seventeen. So this was just brought forth by the county, asking what the, if the city was interested in doing it, if they weren't interested in doing it. The costs that are associated with it, county put together some costs that would be a local share of about three hundred and sixty-six thousand. I think that's low. They use the numbers and they said they use the numbers from our project, which is a much larger project. So I think we're going to be over four hundred thousand by the time we're said and done. But I think it's something, I think this is the right time to do it. In conjunction with this project, it continues your pedestrian corridor. It lights and it paves the rest of the way to Cub Creek, to basically the Horace city limits. So this isn't being sent for any type of action. It's just a for your information item that this is out there. I will reach out. I called the highway department today. I didn't get ahold of Kyle, but I will reach out to him and find out what is needed from the city to keep this moving if they so choose, and we'll have this back on the agenda for the first or second meeting in January. Typically, the highway department likes to bid these projects in March.
Jim, let me ask you something on this one, though. Being there asking us about the storm sewer and that bike path. If we did that at a separate time, I'm assuming that we're talking probably a pretty good cost differential. I mean, it could have cost us more if we did it outside of their parameters than within, correct?
You'll, you'll see the benefit of doing it as part of the project, yes.
Yeah, that's what I'm, yeah, like I said, don't want any action tonight, but I just want everybody to realize that there is some cost differences there if we do that on our own or a future date too. So something we should probably look at a little bit, but when, when you bring it back for next time, I just wanted to get that out there, so.
Yeah. The second thing I have for you tonight is the County Road seventeen Shared Use Path Phase Two. This is from eighty-first Street Avenue up to the roundabout at Seventy-sixth Avenue. The, we approved, the agreement or the city approved the agreement some time ago. Cass County entered into that agreement with the DOT. This project is a transportation alternatives grant project, which means that the county, highway of county is the sponsor. Horace is under five thousand people, so you're not the, you can't be the sponsor. But Jason Benson forwarded me the signed agreement with the DOT. And next is to establish a bid opening date. Pam Winger with the DOT have been in contact with me with possible options for bid opening. This money has to be spent in twenty-twenty-two. So the earliest that we could bid this project would be early twenty-twenty-two, potentially late twenty-twenty-one, but it really kind of shortens up our, our planning schedule. So at a public works meeting last Thursday, we discussed opening bids on April eighth. If you go back to that form that you had just seen had opened, Brian, there, so that go to April twenty-twenty-two. Keep going. You're twenty-one yet. Keep going. Next, right there. So being that this is a project is administered through the North Coast Department of Transportation, we have to follow all their guidelines as far as plans and specifications and environmental documents. As you can see here, that if you're going to bid the project in April of twenty-twenty-two, you have to start turning documents into them in November of twenty-twenty-one. So there's quite a bit of time in that bidding process and we, I potentially was looking at doing a March bid opening, but it moves everything up. And quite honestly, the month of December tends to get to be a wash sometimes with holidays and all that going on. So if we go to the April eighth, twenty-twenty-two, we have a good ti, a good schedule going forward and we can hit all of our milestones and have a little bit of room and a little bit of wiggle room. In typical Horace fashion, I'm not convinced that something might not come up. It just seems like there's always some little wrinkle that has to come up whenever we do a project like this. So by giving us enough time to iron those out, I think would be better. And also it gives us time to get the project constructed in twenty-twenty-two. So no action, we, this is just a kind of FYI that this project is moving forward and in the process with the DOT, so.
Good. Be nice to get that road hook or, you know, that trail hook up there when the, when the high school gets going, so we can alternate transportation methods to get up there. Kids can use their bikes and stuff like that, so.
Yep.
Cool.
Those are the two things that I wanted to update you on, on today.
Okay, so you're good to go?
I'm good to go.
All right, thanks, Jim. Appreciate it. Brenton, you're up.
Okay, what, the main item I have is in regards to interest paid for or paying off special assessments that were certified this year in twenty-twenty and in the interest paid towards those. We've been trying to work with the county to work with them to have no interest. The charge to anybody that pays their special assessments off for those certified in twenty-twenty before December thirty-first, the county indicated originally that their software could account for doing so. They later have recently came back to us saying that they could not do that. So staff has been working with Cass County to figure out a solution or a best case solution, how we could still have a no-interest type situation for any property owners. What we would do is if anybody pays off their specials that were certified in twenty-twenty, so it'd be Lakeview Seventy-Ninth, Seventy-sixth Roundabout, Sixty-third, or Vissos Third Edition, we have come back to council on January nineteenth at the second meeting in January to get approval, reimbursing those property owners, their interest that was paid that we originally not wanting to have them pay or be charged for. Anybody that pays specials in full after January one would not be getting a refund on that interest paid. So it's just if they meet that December thirty-first timeline. We'll have a fair explanation of that on the city's website, but wanted to touch base with council so you know what we would be coming back to you with. It said the county indicated that they would be able to make it work. They came back later after we announced it, actually just recently saying that their software is not able to handle that. So we're, we're trying to work with it and still give residents that benefit of no interest through the end of the year. The other item I have is just a reminder, just a heads up for council and anybody listening. The second meeting in January, which could normally be January eighteenth, will be Tuesday, January nineteenth because of Martin Luther King Day.
Okay. Anybody got any questions or anything? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the next one. That's the one I added on here. On Friday, I got a letter from John Corso Man stating that he is planning to resign effective immediately from the council. Some health concerns, some, some family things that they want to just try and he wants to back away from this, concentrate on the, on health and family and work. And I don't, I understand. I, I'm reluctant, but I understand what you're doing, so. Just wanted to thank John for his service to the city and what he did on the council. I really appreciate the hard work he put in with us. Helping, just helping with everything. Remember, we met him for the first time when I got elected. It was, you know, he had all kinds of advice. That was good. And I still hope we can use him for a sounding board or some advice every now and then because he's a wealth of information. So anyway, we appreciate his time on the council. We wish him well in his future endeavors. So then in consulting with our city attorney, I talked with Brenton a little bit. Kind of trying to figure out to fill his seat. I can make the recommendation. So we spent some time talking about this a little bit. To fill John's seat, I recommend Sarah White. There's a person that I think would fill John's seat well. She's well-versed in what's been going on in the city. She's been paying attention to different things. I've talked with her on and off for, I don't know how many years on some different city things, and she's astute as to what's going on. She was probably my first thought when I, when I got that letter from John and I'm going to think this through a little bit. She was probably my first candidate. She has, and after I talked with her, she's agreed to do this with the council's permission. So with that, is there any questions, guys, that you have on that? I know some of you are aware of some of this stuff, but any questions? Concerns about that?
Nope.
I'd just like to echo, you know, Corey, your, your, you know, sentiments regarding John's value and helping the council and his guidance over the years. So I know he's been active and, and very, very helpful for us in guiding, guiding the team on, on what needs to be going, you know, going forward. So he certainly will be missed.
Yeah, definitely.
I would say the same. I really appreciate John's interaction. I did take over his MetroCock position and he provided me a, a number of feedback and things on what would transpire. So I appreciate his work as well and, and hopefully that he'll give the time to focus on his health issues and, and any family things he's working through, but appreciate all of his effort and time for the city of Horace.
Agreed. Do you guys have any questions about Sarah or any conversation about that? Like I said, I think we've gone been some talk, talk. You guys, most, I think, everybody knows her, so, you know. And I feel very comfortable bringing her on board in front of you as a candidate to fill John's position.
So is this a situation where you're basically forming a nomination for her to fill the remainder of John's term?
Right.
I think she'd be a good candidate for the council. I, she provides, you know, similar insights to what John, you know, has done in the past. So I think she would be an excellent candidate.
Okay. Dave, any comments?
No, I would agree with Brian. She has been provided feedback on other issues and things that have happened in the community and would be a good candidate as well, to fill his position.
Chelsea, any comments?
Um, well, I'll echo what the guy said. You know, I've had multiple sit downs with John and they've always been really great. We don't always agree on everything, but we can, we could talk through it and, and I definitely will miss hearing his opinion. I don't really know Sarah, but I do trust what you guys have worked out. It's not a lot of time left in his terms. So if she's willing to come in and, and take it on, I think that's great.
Yep, I agree. Well, she agreed. She agreed she would do that if we nominated and approved her, so. So I'm going to put her in front of you guys. So I'm going to propose we make a motion to accept Sarah White to complete John's term on the council.
Mr. Mayor, the, the council would have to wait fifteen days after the resignation.
I wasn't sure if it was, yeah, okay. That's, so basically then what I'll do tonight, then Lucas is just say that that was, that's my recommendation, then, and then we'll do the fifteen days, right?
Perfectly fine.
Okay. So we'll do that. So with that, then I'll move along to the portilla reports. Don't really have anything right now, so other than I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Enjoy the holiday season and, you know, it's just kind of adhere to what the CDC recommends and things like that. But let's, you know, everybody try and enjoy even with that little cloud hanging over our heads. So with that, I'll move on to, Dave, what do you got?
I do not have anything specific, but just wanted to say the same, as I wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year and appreciate again all of the effort that our staff has been putting forward in this last year and all their work through all of the challenges we've had with COVID and all the things that we brought forward. So appreciate their time and look forward to getting some of the new equipment that we've ordered to help with some of the snow removal, but it seems like it's going to be a dry year this year, so.
I don't think anybody's going to complain too much about that, so. Chelsea, what do you got?
Uh, just echo what Dave said. Merry Christmas and I hope that the, the staff can take a break and, and enjoy a few days with their, their loved ones.
Agreed. All right, Brian, that leaves you. What do you got?
So I got one, one topic bid, yeah. I'll echo all the other council members, wishing everyone a happy, or happy holidays and, and Merry Christmas and, and Happy New Year. So I'll, I'll cover all the bases. But I did want to briefly just let residents know that we are heavily in the process of the capital improvement plan activity, reviews for construction projects that are going to be prioritized for the upcoming year. So we have done, completed at least one pass with public works and engineering input to prioritize the list that we have on the list so far and working through, you know, the funding mechanisms and that kind of thing for each of the projects. So if there are projects that residents have said, hey, you know, if, if there isn't something, we will be making that list available. But, you know, this next few months is our timeframe for us to, to make sure that if, if there are pressing projects, either reconstruction of existing roads or infrastructure or whatever it is and prioritizing those along with the, the new construction that will be happening. You know, we're, we're actively working now for the next couple of months to, to get as far along as we can with that activity. So we will be looking for more feedback in, in January on that capital improvement plan pro, process and making sure that we, you know, if there are things that should be prioritized higher than the ones, items we do have, then we'd like to get those on the list, so. But yeah, if there's, if there's pressing questions, concerns. then we'd like to get those on the list. So, but yeah, if there's, if there's pressing questions, concerns, you know, the residents have, please contact either the staff, city staff or myself. And we will make sure that either it's on the list already, but we'll get it on the list to, to review and prioritize with everything else.
Sounds good. All right. Anybody got anything else? Otherwise there's a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay. Chelsea does a second. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Perfect. All right. We're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, everyone. See you, see you next year. Merry Christmas.
See you next year is right.